Okay, welcome everybody. Opening the call to order of the Sherburne Select Board on July 14th, 2022 at exactly 7:00 PM. And I'd like to ask the interim town administrator to please read the agenda.
Good evening. So after I read the agenda tonight, the board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. There is a section for public comment, but I haven't been notified by anybody that they'd like to do a public comment tonight. There is the consent agenda, which is the payroll warrant, draft minutes of May 5th, 2022, and May 19th, 2022. And the next select board meeting is scheduled for July 28. The second item is consideration of year-end transfers with debt searing our intra-finance director. Item number three is a consideration of a bond anticipation note renewal with Heidi Doyle, our town treasurer. Number four is the consideration of a promotion within the Sherburne Police Department, that's Chief Thomas Galvin. Number five is review of comments and submission letter to Mass Housing regarding the proposed 40B Farm Road Homes. And item number six is consideration of routine business, which will be select board reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any comments on the agenda?
Move to approve.
Just a comment. There's been some recent issues about public comment. And sort of a general recommendation that I would make if I were town council here, but I've made it elsewhere. Is that we ought to have some policies in place and some changes in the wording on the agenda about public comment. Maybe that's something that Jeff, I can give you a call, see if you want to do. I think as chair, you could probably implement them.
Okay.
We've had situations in the past where people come and they start denouncing Joe Biden in the middle of a
Yeah.
And so you want, but you have to have something in place. You can't just
Shut it off.
Person, you can't just say, hey, stop talking.
Yeah.
Unless you have some, some policies and procedures in place.
Yeah, that would be good because you know, I've seen it on the regional school committee has had some people do that here. So these people felt very vehemently about certain aspects of COVID cautionary measures. So that'd be great, Paul. So yeah, we can just let me know. I'm free tomorrow afternoon or we can talk next week.
But it would change the agenda because it would put a caveat in there that says something like, you know, statements made in public comment are not statements formally made on behalf of the town. These are opinions of private citizens. So we're not because we're publishing it, it's not, these are, no matter what they say, it's, it's just a cap. But I'll, I'll talk to you offline.
Yeah, let's talk offline. And on, on the consent agenda, you saw in the packet, I think it also, in addition to the next meeting listed there, it has the meetings for the rest of the year in there too, in the packet. So in case you were looking for that. So we've approved the agenda. We voted on the agenda already. Did we? No. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Marion.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
And I am, I as well. To have a motion with respect to the consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Marion?
I.
Eric.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
And I am, I as well. Hello there, Deb.
Hey Jeff, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good, good evening. Yeah. Are you able to share your screen, Jeff?
I am, but I don't know if I have that open. You want me to, you want me to, let me see if I can dig it up. Hang on.
Okay, as you do that, I just
I didn't plan to do that, but I'll figure it out. You keep talking, you talk and I'll, I'll play.
Okay, so yes, so for tonight, we did need to do the year-end transfers. And per UMass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B, all deficits in the operating budget need to be covered by July the 15th. The law states that the selectmen with the concurrence of the finance committee must approve the transfer. The advisory committee met last evening as they were not able to get a a quorum for tonight and they approved all the transfers. So now I do need the approval of the select board to confirm all these transfers. So I appreciate you taking the time tonight to approve these. And
Why don't you describe them while I'm digging up the attachment?
Okay, sure.
I'll order, we're voting on, please.
Pardon?
Tell the voters what we're voting on.
Oh yeah, so we have, at the end of fiscal year 22, we have $393,300 worth of deficits in, let's see, three, six, 10 different departments. And I am requesting that we use the funds from three departments that were that had more than enough money to cover these deficits. So the first department that needs a transfer is Town Council for $185,000. And this was due to unanticipated legal assistance. Does anybody have any questions in regard to that?
Just if I could make a comment, it's, it's a shocking number, but we've had some 40B issues. We've had, we've got some lawsuits. There's our lawsuit in the library, trying to recover money there. So we've had to spend money on council where other years we didn't have to spend this kind of money.
Yes, this is the highest it's been in the last five years. So the next department is information technology and we're requesting a transfer of $64,500. This is a new department. The previous budget did not align with these historical costs. There was a budget of $35,000 previously in, as a line item in the select board budget. So for this year, we did create a new department and move that $35,000 over. So this $64,500 is in addition to that $35,000. We have the FY '23 budget is much more transparent and aligns with the actuals. Any questions in regard to that?
Yeah, for some reason, the town outlook's not working for me right now. So I just asked Steven Si, I don't know if you're there, Steven, can you share your screen with the transfers? I'm not sure if he's there or not. They, they voted on it last night in advisory.
Um, I, I can get myself in a place where I can do that. I'm on my phone.
I, for some reason, I can't get into, it's, it says it needs more information to log me into the town outlook. I don't know what they say, implemented something different for outlook or what's going on there, but I couldn't get in. Oh, did you?
Yeah.
I don't know what it is, so I
It was security stuff.
Yeah, I don't know what any of it is, so I couldn't log in.
So are you the real Jeff Waldron or are you?
I don't know.
Impersonator.
Soon as I find out, I'll let you know though.
Okay then. All right, so the next department needing a transfer is conservation for $9,000. This was primarily due to the agent position hours were increased to meet the staffing needs. We did budget for these additional staffing needs in FY '23. The town buildings needs a transfer of $24,100. This is mostly due to an unbudgeted clerk of the work salary of $11,000. We had budgeted for a half of a year, but we didn't need the full year. And then there was another additional $13,000 for additional alarm and elevator service maintenance that was unanticipated. For sustainability, we need a transfer of $16,000. And this again is a new department. It was previously budgeted in the select boards budget and we moved $38,000 into this new department. And this is above and beyond that $38,000. And again, if you remember when we were doing the FY '23 budget, this is budgeted correctly in FY '23 and is, and will, is much more transparent and will align with the actuals. Pine Hill School needs a transfer of $15,000. And this is basically due to $8 worth of fuel surcharges for school bus transportation. And $7,000 of van transportation for industry, in district sped students. These were unbudgeted costs for FY '22 that could not be covered with the operating budget. Norfolk Aggie needs a transfer of $24,100. There were no students budgeted in FY '22, although one student did attend. The transfer station needs a budget of a transfer of $5,100. There was significant and costly utility repair issues this year that were unanticipated. The Board of Health needs a transfer of $26,000. And this was for additional pay for increase of hours due to COVID. We had originally anticipated to take this money out of ARPA, but since it can be covered with different departments, we decided to use a transfer here so that we can use ARPA money for different things. And the other insurance needs a transfer of $24,300. And that is because professional insurance was not budgeted in FY '22, but it was taken care of in FY '23. So that totals 393,000. And it's actually $393,200. Pine Hill School is just an even 15,000, not the 15,100 that's reflected on this spreadsheet. So I propose to take $219,000 out of the reserve fund, 26, oh, this is an old sheet here. $26,300 out of employee benefits and $148,000 out of the police budget.
Thanks for sharing, Steven.
Yes, thank you, Steven.
Just one comment. We can't, we can't effectively vote a number that's different from what was voted by advisory in that.
Yeah, on the second, on the second screen, you'll see that they did vote the $393,200. And these, these are the accurate numbers right down here. The reserve is 219,000, out of the police budgets, 100,000, and employee benefits at $74,200. That's what advisory board voted last night.
So this is exactly the same thing as advisory voted?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
And I think if it's the same as advisory, we just vote for the transfers from just the reserve police employee benefits. Is that correct, Deb?
That is correct.
And should we do them individually or do them as group?
You can do them as a group.
Okay. Someone want to make a motion? Or I asked you, does anyone on the board before we make a motion have any questions or comments? We're okay. All right, does someone want to make a motion?
Some of us.
So we're moving to transfer to 19,000 from reserve, 100,000 from police, and 74,200 from employee benefits. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Marion?
I.
Eric?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Thanks, Deb.
Thank you.
Nice job, Deb.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to Heidi. Are you here? Heidi, there you are.
Yes, I am. Good evening. I'm
I can't share my screen for you either because I can't get into my email, Sherburne email.
This, this is quick. You don't need to share the screen. So this is for a renewal of an existing ban. This is for the DPW pickup truck of $109,719. I could not put this item into the new long-term bond I am doing because we cannot get delivery date yet and we don't physically have it. So I have to actually do a renewal on this item that they're expecting probably late fall. So next meeting, I will be coming forward, asking you to sign the grant, the general obligation bond documents, as well as this additional ban item for the separate one for the pickup truck. And that logistics, they, Bond Council today said they would like to have original signatures on the bond. So they're going to send me all the documents a couple of days before the meeting. Then I will send an email out to see if we can arrange for people to stop by Town Hall. And then you will actually vote on it on the 28th. So that even the, they said you can sign the documents before the 28th because it will not be effective until you actually make the vote. And then I can express it on the 29th to them.
Okay.
So I'm asking for a motion to, for the treasurer to go out to bid for renewal of DPW pickup truck bond anticipation note of $109,719 as requested by the town treasurer.
So a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Marion?
I.
Eric?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heidi. This makes the meeting go quicker when George is in here. We only have four votes. We don't have to get five. So Tom, you got a promotion in the police department. I'm kind of excited.
Always exciting. So good evening. Tonight I'm asking that you promote Officer Kelly Exoropoulos to the rank of sergeant. In the FY '23 budget, we funded an additional sergeant's position for the department to allow for supervisory coverage on all shifts. The process to select a new sergeant began in early 2022. Officers with at least three years of full-time experience were invited to submit a letter of interest and a resume. A panel of regional command staff conducted interviews of five candidates and ranked their performance. Each candidate was given a written assignment to complete and a review of their work history and performance was done. And a final ranking completed. Sergeant Godino ranked first out of all candidates and was promoted in May. Officer Exoropoulos ranked second, just below Sergeant Godino. Officer Kelly Exoropoulos joined the Sherburne Police Department in August of 2017 and attended the Randolph Police Academy in 2018. During her time with the department, she has served as a sexual assault investigator, emergency medical technician, field training officer, and is currently assigned as the department liaison for the Holliston-Hoppington Sherburne Jail Diversion Program. Although not permanently assigned in a supervisory role, Officer Exoropoulos is an informal leader within the department and provides guidance to her fellow officers on a regular basis. Prior to joining the department, Officer Exoropoulos earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in psychology from Norwich University and a Master of Criminal Justice from Anne Maria College. While at Norwich, Officer Exoropoulos was a member of the university soccer team and has been described by her coach as a leader on the field, which is exactly what we see every day. Outside of work, Officer Exoropoulos is supported by her family, her husband Mark, a lieutenant with the Hudson Fire Department, and their daughter Audrey. This is actually a very notable promotion for the town. This is the first woman who's been promoted to the rank of sergeant within the police department. But this is more than that. This isn't something to just check a box or to meet a standard. Officer Exoropoulos has earned the promotion and will be an asset to the community and to the police department in her new role. So tonight I ask that you vote to promote Officer Kelly Exoropoulos to the rank of sergeant.
Everybody have any comments or want to make a motion?
And move approval.
Second.
Okay, Marion?
Hi.
Eric?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And I am I as well. Kelly, congratulations and thanks for your hard work. And, and I would add that I heard you played lacrosse in addition to soccer.
I did, I did.
I do my investigations.
Could she say some few words so the voters see her? Ever, people know her anyway, but
Yeah.
Maybe good for her to kind of introduce herself.
Hi, can everyone hear me okay? All right, so um, thank you for this opportunity. I'm very excited for a chance for a new challenge and opportunity for growth. I've had the opportunity to be very fortunate in Sherburne to learn from other senior officers and gain a lot of experience through training and my past experience translated over well to Sherburne. And I look forward to this new opportunity and continuing and serving the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks, Kelly. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
And we'll move on now. Marion, do you want to sort of kick us off on the, we're now moving to the, the heart, the heart of the batting order here. Talking about the 40B Farm Road Homes project. And I know you've prepared a summary and you have, I think, a few slides that we're going to share. Is that right?
Yeah, I have a few slides and a quick summary for the people that may be here and are not familiar with this project. I think almost everyone here is familiar, but just in case, this is just a very short primer on the project. And I see Bob Murchison, the developer is here. Bob, forgive me if I don't mention things that are, that are important and mention things that aren't important, but I'm just going to try to do a really, really quick summary and look forward to hearing from you later.
I was just going to add, Marion, too, just so people know that we, we've gotten now comments from all the boards and committees in town on the proposal. And we've also gotten comments from citizens at large. And those are being integrated and Marion is writing what I refer to as an executive summary. And I think it'll have the attachment of the actual raw input that we got. But she'll try to create an executive summary that integrates all of that.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Thank you, Jeff. And this summary will go back to mass housing. And they will use the information, we hope, to try to guide the project in some way if needed. So I'm going to share my screen if I may.
Yep, go ahead.
I just want to show first to people who are not initiated to this project. For those who are, just bear with me. It'll be very short. I want to show the general location of this project. This is obviously Sherburne Town Center. The main street, here's Farm Road. And as you know, the, the town forest goes all around town and crosses Farm Road. This, the, the property that is the site of this project is where the star is. It's right on Farm Road. It's adjacent to Town Forest. And, and a sort of outstanding feature of it is that it, residents would have immediate access to trails that leave direct, lead directly to Pine Hill School and to Farm Pond, as well as to the entire system of trails in town. So next I want to show you what the layout of the project is on that land. And I've got to make this a little bit smaller there. Can you see that? Is it big enough?
Yeah, I think it's okay.
Great. This is a, a, a dense development of about 24 market rate homes and eight affordable homes. The affordable homes will fulfill the affordable requirement of, of the state. And they're of different sizes, but you'll notice that in general, they are smaller than most Sherburne homes. 14 are duplex units that are in green on this game. Six are two-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath cottages. And those are in purple down here, if you see my cursor. Then there are 12 three-bedroom homes, six of one design and six of another that are in orange and, and blue. So the affordable homes are totally integrated in this. Each of those categories has some affordable and some market rate. You'll notice that a large part of the property is open space. The septic systems are in kind of one large area. And there are plans for a net zero energy use. So you see part of that plan is ground-mounted solar panels up here in the top of the property. I just want to show you how this, how this plan is situated on the property as it now stands. So I'm going to make this a little bigger so you can see better. Is that better? On the right is the plan you just saw. On the left is a Google image of the land as it currently is. You'll notice the image on the left is rotated a little bit to counter-clockwise to the left. They don't line up perfectly because the, the Google images are not all due north. But you can see that most of the dense development is on areas that were already cleared. This used to be a horse farm. So in the, the solar units would be up in this area up here. So that's all I wanted to show you. Are there any questions right off the bat? And Bob, excuse me if I had left a lot of stuff out. I wanted to make it short.
Yeah, Marion, I have a, I have a question. So it looks like there's four types of homes, six of each. How is the affordability broken up? Because I thought they had to be somewhat even, you know what I mean? I thought you couldn't have like, make all the one-bedrooms affordable and all the five bedrooms or whatever, you know.
Yeah, that's a good question, Eric. They're, they're broken up really very well of the duplex units. There are 14 of them. Three are affordable and 11 are market rate. And that's sort of in the same ratio as the affordable to market rate ratio. I mean, it, the whole thing under Chapter 40B has to be 25% affordable. It can be 25 market rate.
Bless you.
In each of these categories, about one-third to one-half are affordable and the others are market rate. So they're kind of evenly divided among all these styles. Okay. So over the past several days, I've been putting together a summary as best I can of the, all the comments of the boards and committees. And done a bit of editing, editing, I must say, that I couldn't resist. But as Eric said, everything is going to be included in the document that we send to mass housing. Oh, I've got to stop sharing. Did I stop sharing?
You did, you did. You're good.
I've got to share again, so hold on just a sec, sorry. Okay. I'm just pulling up the, the draft letter that I've put together over the last several days. And just to remind you all, it's not final by any means. Did my best and I'm happy to hear your comments.
I have some comments.
I'm sure you do. Let me, let me just scroll down. Maybe we'll, Jeff, shall we start with comments from the select board?
I think so, yes. And then the boards and committees and then the residents.
Okay, can everybody see this letter? Is it readable?
They won't have had a chance to read it in advance, though. I, I think this is bullet point, though. I think
Oh, right. Shall we go straight to the bullet point?
I think that's, the, the, the other is really a preamble for most of our introduction, introductory.
Right. Okay, the introduction points out that Sherburne has no municipal water or sewer. And these are challenges, but we fully support the increase of affordable and diverse housing options. As written in our accepted plans for the town. And we've taken steps toward fulfilling housing, affordable housing goals. But we are not in safe harbor with the holdoff of the Coolidge Crossing developments. We're no longer in safe harbor. So this letter is going to summarize the select board's analysis and summary. And then provide a bullet points of additional concerns of the town boards and committees. And then supporting information, all the original stuff that was sent to me is going to go along with this letter. So I don't have the select board summary as bullet points. But
Well, you sort of do, the underlying sections are really the, the
Right, there's a section on eligibility, which we assume that the project is eligible. I put in a little bit of detail there, that we're assuming it's eligible. The sighting is the next section. And I detail the positive aspects of the site. And the design and layout have positive features consistent with the goals and recommendations of our plans. The planning board had issues with the eight units that you saw very close to Farm Road that they thought would impact the scenic status of the Farm Road, which is a state-designated scenic road. And they suggested changes there. The net zero energy goal is a plus. The planning board and Energy and Sustainability Committee were not happy with the solar panels being ground-mounted in a place that would require cutting of trees and on disturbed lands suggested they could be rooftop. The major comments were all really about environmental and health, public health concerns. That is stormwater and the safety of the wells. And that's that's the recurring theme, as everybody knows, in Sherburne. So we explained the the concerns here in a very general way, taking the comments of the of the various boards and committees and putting them together in a paragraph. So.
Marion, who commented on stormwater? I'm trying to find that.
The Conservation.
Conservation Commission did.
Okay.
The Board of Health. And the ground and the Water Commissioners and the Groundwater Protection Committee. All commented on stormwater. The well and water supply issues, of course, were mainly the Board of Health. Oh, go ahead.
I'll let you finish at some point. I wanted to make a comment, too, but.
Uh, yeah, I'm I'm basically done, Paul. I'm sorry to the public that you don't have a chance to read this in advance, but the boards and committees have it in advance. And and Mr. Murchison, the developer, has it in advance. So I'm happy to take comments and.
Marion, actually, that's that's not true. I've not received that.
I emailed it to you today, Bob.
I I didn't receive it, but it's okay. It's not a big deal. I just wanted to clarify the.
I did email it to you. To your email that's on the.
Yeah, I don't know. No, no worries. I just didn't receive it. That's all.
My apologies. You should have. Okay. So shall we, Jeff, take comments and revisions from the select board first?
Yes, I think we should do that first, and then we'll see if maybe each mem committee wants to have one member talk to their concerns.
Can I just make my my one comment?
Sure.
Yeah, whatever. It's just, you know, predictable what I would make, whatever. Yes, I I looked through some of the I looked through some of the stormwater comments in a generic sense. I just want to make it clear. Well, whether it be in this cover lot or not, that the expectation is that the site meet the federal requirements of the of the MS four permit.
MS four, yeah.
As also iterated in the in the Town's General Bylaw.
Yes. So we can add language about the MS four permit.
Sean might be able to help with that, actually.
Right, Sean did not weigh in on this yet. So what I'm doing here is making notes on my hard copy while you talk about it, and I'm happy to scroll to whatever part of the.
And I'm also having trouble logging on to my email, so I can't look at this independently.
I gotta figure out what's going on there, yeah. They changed something. I'm not sure for what reason. So Paul, are you finished, Eric?
Yes, thank you.
Paul, do you want to go next?
Sure. So first, I wanted to compliment Marion. How wonderful are you to have done all this work and put us together? Thank you, thank you. And it is very well done. Second thing I wanted to say is that just make a disclosure that I have a complicated relationship with Mass Housing. So I I may or may not be one of their lawyers. I haven't checked recently, but I've I've done work for them in the past. Just gonna make a disclosure. I'm not working with them right now and not working on this project for them. So I had three suggestions only to the selectman's portion. Felt it was not really my business to try and change any of the thoughts from the various boards and committees. All of whom have done really a fabulous job here. But on the selectman's part, I thought there are three points that I wanted to beef up a little. And each of the point has the effect of tilting this ladder a little bit more towards the concern category. The first is the discussion in this first section about eligibility. The second paragraph I feel should be a lot stronger by I I've written down some words, but maybe I should discuss that offline rather than try and try and go through a lot of words right now. But I I wanted to do two things with edits here. One is to indicate that it actually is or should be the case that the cooling-off period does apply. And you 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 basically say that, but it's said in a very gentle way. I think the cooling-off period does apply.
I actually, Paul, I what you're saying, I think, speaks to a an edit that I made. I have a much more detailed statement about that further down, and I can find it for you if you're looking.
That's that was gonna be in one of my other edits, which is to cross-reference that. So in that, in the that first paragraph, I wanted to add.
Sorry.
See the discussion under Safe Harbor. See further discussion of Safe Harbor. So that you introduce upfront that it's not eligible right now because of the one-year cooling-off period. And then say, as further discussed under Safe Harbor, the Safe Harbor discussion at the end. The Safe Harbor thing is is not part of the selectman's discussion. So it 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 follows the discussion of all the other boards, so it's 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 quite separated. But I think the the two ought to be right together or put up here as part of this, because it's it's really quite a.
Uh, yeah, I could move it back to where it was, which is right up here.
It's 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 quite a statement. It's just as I read it, and I'm just speaking as a lawyer here, that this this one-year cooling-off period will apply and would be so helped to apply. So I I wanted to beef that up. And again, I can I can send you a email about the specific specific words there. Then the next was in item ten. Where.
Item ten. Help me out. Where is that? What's the heading?
All right, let me let me call up the document.
Because I don't have, oh, maybe it's the bullet point ten.
This was a discussion. Maybe it was P. Trying to remember why I wrote down number ten.
P for Planning Board? Maybe you can tell me what the comment is and I can figure it out.
Yeah, I wanted to to say that it presents unreasonable risk rather than the words may result. So you had the words may result. And and to me, that's it could be stronger if you said creates an unreasonable risk. This has to do with the concentration of septic systems that may result in affecting affecting groundwater or or water. I wanted to beef that up and says, and say that presents an unreasonable risk.
Okay.
But again, I can find that and send it to you.
Yeah, that would be great. Thanks. I get the point. Unreasonable risk regarding septic to well-water contamination.
And then incidentally, in my version of this, in specific comments on the Farm Road Homes Project are organized as follows, and I have Roman numeral one, Roman numeral two, and then Roman numeral four. So my copy from number three is not there. So maybe four should be three.
Okay, check Roman numerals.
And there's a discussion of the deed restriction. And that's I'm trying to find that.
That is under eligibility. I wanted to include it because it has been brought up.
Yes, and I
of the, yeah.
I wanted to strengthen that. So so I wanted to change a few words again to making it a stronger statement. And that's would be to delete the phrase and not renewed. That's in like the fourth lineup from the bottom of that paragraph.
It would of the eligibility paragraph. Oh, yeah, historically, okay.
Yes, the paragraph beginning historically.
Provided that the private parcels not be further divided, but not explicitly renewed. Yeah, so can you tell me exactly what you're saying there or send it to me?
I want to delete the words, but not explicitly renewed.
Oh, I see.
Because the the lawyers there are lawyers out there who would say that the referencing it again and other deeds did explicitly renew that, then I I don't think we should take a position rejecting that argument. I think there's some merit to the argument.
Yeah, I've put that. Oh, go ahead.
And similarly, where it's it says towards the end of that, where the restriction has expired, this where it says the standard thirty-year limit has expired. I would strike the word standard and substitute the word original. So although the original thirty-year limit restriction has expired, a butter's contend that by reference the legal restriction should still apply.
Okay.
So again, these changes are intended to be clearer, but also to tilt this a little more towards a stronger statement that there are there are issues here. There are legal issues here.
Okay, I got that, Paul.
That's it.
Thanks. Jeff, I can't see the whole screen because I've got my document up here. Can you?
Yeah, so so I think we should just go through the various boards and committees now.
Anyone else on the on Select Board have a comment?
No, that's just me. It's only a person, Mary and I, and you and I talked about it, so I'm good with it. And I actually just sent it to to Bob Murchison, so
Oh, thank you.
Have it.
Great.
I couldn't do it on my laptop, but I could do it from my phone. I don't know what's going on with our emails.
You know, it could be that, you know, we're all having trouble with Outlook today because
I know, I know.
Thing. Maybe that's what happened to my email to Bob.
Yeah, that's what I told him. So being anal that I am, I put the boards and committees in alphabetical order. So do we want to have the
Should be in alphabetical order. Okay.
That's no, you don't have to, but that's just what I do you want to do it in the order you have them in the document, then you can just scroll down? That's fine, too, which is planning board first?
Well, yeah, it'd be easier for me if you just take them.
Yeah, makes sense makes sense strategically, too. So I don't know if Chris is here or who's adding, who's representing the planning board tonight?
I'm here. I mean, I can say, I mean, the the points that I see in this letter are exactly what the planning board has committed, so.
Yeah.
We're we're fine with this.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, that's what it is. Courtney straightened this out here. They went to two-factor authentication.
Okay, Conservation Commission is on two pages, so I have to scroll a little bit.
Is that
I'm getting there.
Courtney or Michael going to speak to that?
Sure. Fine.
You don't have to be so enthusiastic.
No, 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 no. I was just trying to get myself oriented with a different the the three points journey there. I have some suggested edits for how those could be a little bit worded there, but I have to stick to what's in the but yes, the which I'll send to you, Marion. Like in the first point is obviously a similar one that that was brought up before and Paul wanted to strengthen about the about the clustered, both the the size of the septic area and the clustering of it. Basically is a is a problem for what basically wetland impacts as well as their functioning to deal with pollution prevention and protecting groundwater. And so you've covered that in other days. I just wanted to have a little wording, like at the end, just to note that it's a buffer zone for extensive wetland resources. Let's say at the end of the first point. And the second one, which is more stormwater, it's basically a concern for stormwater capacity and the quality of the existing pond and adjacent land subject to flooding, which are both wetland resources. And and that, so there's significant potential impact there for on the stormwater capacities there and what flooding might be around. And also that second thing, the proposed entry road crosses and some planned, some and to add in, I would say to add in, some I could send you all this, some planned buildings along Farm Road are located in an area that's currently appears to be subject to seasonal flooding. So it's not just the entry road. The observations have been made that it goes further to the west. And so and those are jurisdictional areas for wetlands protection. And and also there is the issue that wildlife habitat issues that are noted there. That should be addressed. So you've captured most of it there. You've captured it there. And yeah, so we have concerns, especially about the septic and the and the septic system, both its location. So it's a function of both size and design.
Your letter was very concise on that and and it will be attached.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is Matt Vitale or Daryl?
I didn't see Matt. I saw Daryl earlier. Let's see if she's still here.
Yes, I'm here.
She's she's there.
Let's see, so.
Hey, I'm listening, Daryl.
I think on the short side of, I mean, there are a number of Board of Health issues, but if the project follows Board of Health procedures on things, these issues. these issues will be covered. So that's a key part of this is whether our regulations will be applied or not. They need to be applied for the if they if private wells are pursued. In any case, the, I think the key point is that given the density of septics and also the clustering, so both issues. An environmental health impact report is going to be an analysis is going to be very important for this to help understand that so that we if there are issues, they can be identified and addressed upfront. Rather than after the fact.
If you have edits beyond what I've already written there, which pretty much sounds like what you said. I'd be happy to get them in a, in an email. I'm trying to, I'm trying to make these fairly telegraphic because your whole letter will be attached as well.
Yes, no, and that's fine. So really what you've included here seems appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if Tom Trainor's here or not.
Jeff, I am.
All right.
Can I have a few minutes?
Sure.
Thank you. And again, Marion, thank you very much. As some of your fellow board members and others have mentioned, you, you've done an incredible job in short time writing what I find a very well organized and readable document. The groundwater committee is quite concerned, similar to what you've heard some already from conservation and Board of Health. And protecting groundwater, you know, the name of the game is separate, keeping it separate from septic affluent and stormwater. So at such a dense site, that's our concern. I thought you did a very good job summarizing our five page document of comments in your, in your bullets right there. And actually, I have a meant to ask you a question. I hope you've got our version at eight AM this morning from our meeting last night.
Yes, I did.
Perfect.
Tell you the truth, I haven't had time to go through it in detail.
I certainly understand that, but we did, we did add some key things along the same lines that you have outlined there. And just one, one last comment, if I may. If, if we could go to something under your select boards.
That we go up there because there is a very comment that you will.
Yeah, we've, we've traded comments before under your environmental and public health concerns. Couple sentences down when we get into the water course. I would say our committee would be a little concerned with your, your sentence about according to current official regulations, current evidence on the ground, the plan and wetland setbacks are adequate. That, that we totally agree with. We defer to the experts, the Conservation Commission. And then they define wetlands. So we have no, we have no dog in that fight. But we would, we would highly suggest that your continuing phrase, there is no water course along Farm Road be in some way reworded. We, we as largely scientists would follow the USGS, the scientific evidence that maps an open surface drain and or water course in that low elevation area that goes from the pond in the southeast corner along adjacent to Farm Road to the southwest corner of the property. That, that is a known a known open surface drain and it at times of high storm events carries water. It doesn't have enough water to, you know, have wetland indicator plants grow. But as you've heard from others and you're getting other comments, water will flow there.
Well, I tried to capture the fact that there are two opinions on this out there in those two sentences. So the second sentence, maybe the USGS analysis and the observations are what you're referring to. And I could word that in a different way, perhaps.
And one suggestion, I don't want to belabor it here because you've got so much to cover. Your last word otherwise. I don't see, I don't see a a disagreement between amongst different parties. One party focus on wetlands. There isn't a wetland there, but there is a open surface drain there.
Well, by the USGS definitions, you know, for the audience that's here tonight, they have to understand the definition of an open surface drain. Because, you know, they, they picture something that's not necessarily the case.
So I'm, I'm going to leave it at that and.
Maybe you can help me make that clearer, that second sentence much clearer.
Sure, I'd be delighted to. Thank you.
Great.
I think it's fire department next, Marion.
All right, let me scroll down.
Oh, no, water commissioners.
Yeah, I don't know if any water commissioners are here tonight.
The comments were pretty similar. I don't see anyone.
They were, they suggested a public water supply and a wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah.
To assure oversight. It was pretty, it was pretty simple comment.
Yep.
And it's a suggestion. Obviously, it can't be required.
Yeah.
Fire and the fire department basically had no issues. They'd like to see sprinklers everywhere, but obviously they're not legally required in this kind of a development.
The cistern is kind of an interesting aspect, too, because if you lose power, you might not have well pumps running. So.
It depends if you make it elevated.
Yeah. Well, you have the pump from, you have the pump from the fire truck, just like we do this retention pond.
It would be a fire truck, a fire cistern, not an emergency water system.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And the, the history of the previous applications that are to Paul's point is here. And that's pretty much it. I haven't yet attached all of the comments that we've gotten.
Yep.
So Jeff, take it away.
Okay. Well, I think maybe you could stop sharing and we'll just see if there's any any other members of the audience, residents or members of the audience that would have a question or like to make a comment or see some elaboration.
I should say that there's going to be a lot of elaboration on all of these issues.
Yeah.
Of when the comprehensive permit application comes to the select, through the zoning board.
Yes.
Long series of meetings and a lot of weighing in. When we've seen the details and we probably should also remind everyone that this is not a, this plan is not cast in stone. It's, it's a concept plan mainly, and that's the purpose of this stage of the process.
Michael's taken his conservation hat on, put his resident hat on, I think. Is that correct?
Yes. I sent today a couple of comments.
I read them.
Yeah, I guess I'll start with I'll start with one about, I wrote, unfortunately, the Energy and Sustainability Committee has not met in this period for various reasons of coordination, of coordinating. And so there are no formal comments from that committee, but we will certainly participate in the comprehensive permit process when that arises. But I sent in on my own a set of sustainability comments that I assume also will be shared with, with Bob. And when he sees this, I guess what I'm trying to think of in the letter, whether the, I don't know, you should decide whether you want to include a little bit more of a emphasis of that the, that with, along with the net zero goal that's advocated there, whether the town wants to take a stronger position about issues of energy efficiency and conservation and water conservation as being important issues to, to reflect more strongly in this project. And as I wrote, as I wrote in my description, a little intro, when I advise that these are issues that apply basically to any project in town. I don't want to single this out. It's just a matter of this is the one before us. But so there are that sort of energy efficiency and water conservation issues that could be brought into the select board points. You were going to say something, Marion, before I go on?
Oh, just that that sort of detail will be coming when we get the, the complete application. We don't expect that sort, that level of detail in an application of this sort, although it's perfectly fine to say that energy efficient, energy efficiency will be front and center, but Mr. Murchison has already said that basically.
Well, it's net zero is a little different than energy efficiency, but it's there. I I've said, I applaud it, but I also wanted to bring in that it's a combination of energy and water. Given our water issues and whether that should be, the fact that water conservation issues are are as critical, given the, the size of the project and our own resources. So it's sort of a combination of those two, but you can decide what you want to do.
Your email will be attached to this letter.
Okay, fine.
Yeah, I'm sure I, I look forward to hearing the Energy and Sustainability Committee. Actually, I was hoping to hear from the committee.
Now, we unfortunately had a couple of meetings that didn't work out. So, but we'll be around for the next process. The, and then I'll and I guess as a resident again, my other comment is just how much you want to reflect in the letter itself from the select board, whether if you agree that, whether how much to hit more head on the issue of project scale. That these number of the number of bedrooms, however you want to do it, as I wrote in my, in my comment, that this is fairly dense for, for properties in, for in Sherborne, and we've already noticed and the constraint that it has with our in the sort of private wells and septic systems. And the fact that we, it's all unclear how sustainable that setup is and that there are signs of some of problems that arise even at our current density and that this project is well over twice the density of many other sort of projects that are more single family. Obviously, there may be affordability, other kind of financing issues, but whether the town wants to take a stronger stand on simply suggesting to mass housing that that the project scale could be reduced to be more fitting to our local conditions with regard to water and septic. And that would be a point that could be made. And the project scales, water and septic and right, and the impacts that this project could have. And whether you want to make that more explicit in your letter. I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, Mary.
I guess, I guess that means. Like on that point.
Oh, it's Brian, Brian or Mary. I didn't know which one it was.
It's, it's both of us, actually.
All right. How you doing?
Could I, can I ask you one thing before I finish and to go on to the next? Should I expect comments from you about these points? Are you basically just going to register them? And I just, I just.
Are you're asking me?
I'm asking the, I'm asking the select board. If I, I would expect maybe other citizens' comments that basically we make a comment about wanting something that you to reflect that that whether you want to react to my request.
Basically, I think he's looking for like, are we going to modify the letter based on his recommendation right now? I think that's, that's.
Simple as that. I didn't want it to just be my spit hot air.
And just to summarize it, the suggestions are basically, you know, stress a bit more, the density in the water sewer impacts was one.
I agree with. I agree with Michael on that. So that was the intent behind my changing the words may result to unreasonably risks, trying to emphasize the point that Mike was making. This there's a real downside to this project, given the density. I think we ought to say that and that it's, this isn't consistent with the, the location.
So I'm sorry. So just, just, you know, effectively get this studying to a final solution. So, Michael, I, do you think that Paul's previous edit that he requested specific edit about unreasonable, whatever fulfills kind of your requests right there?
No, I think that you could word it a little more strongly as just an explicit issue about scale and whether that the project scale should be should be reduced.
Michael, let me ask you the, the scale problem. Are you saying that regarding the character of the neighborhood or the water and septic issues?
I, well, when I was talking before, I hadn't reflected the, the neighborhood issue, but that was also that I saw that you dealt with a little bit more. And that is, and that's more the design of it possibly, possibly there's the design issue, design changes could address. But I, but I feel it's more the scale of the project overall in terms of somewhat design, such as in the case of the way the septic systems are, but it's also partly just pure scale, as I wrote to you about literally like number of bedrooms per acre compared to what's normal in Sherborne and, and the fact that water and septic issues maybe are more sustainable at a lower density.
So it's okay with Jeff. Do we want to simply like open the letter, look at it and see where we might consider an edit that's consistent with them and, and okay with the board?
We could do that. You know, I'd have to jump in, in a number of places. I have exactly that sort of concern expressed. So.
You might want to hear other people's comments before you go back to that. So, and so you could do it all at once.
Sure.
I think Mary has also been taking notes. So I don't know if, do you plan, we won't have time to really circulate it widely after you draft it is the problem, I think.
Well, the question is, you know, with, with these comments and changes, these are comments from individuals or from boards and committees. I think this blackboard still needs to agree. Yes, letter as a whole. So.
Yes, we'll have a chance as a select board to review it, I think.
The five of us. Need that chance, but you know, it's due in one week from yesterday. So.
Yes, no, I know.
Think about that.
Yeah, we can discuss maybe when we get finished with the comments section.
Okay.
So do you, how do you feel, Eric? Do you think we should open the document and look at it? Would that be your preference?
Maybe had Michael indicate, maybe we simply gather, keep notes on, you know, what these diverse items are as they come on. And then maybe at the end of this discussion, then let's go back and look at the letter and if you don't get the exact word and get the intent that's in there. So then we might want to send it out. That's.
That's a good idea.
Suggestion here.
Sure, Paul.
So on, on my comments, I sent them by email to Marion right now. And if Michael could take his comments and actually write it and send her an email, then we'd have some language that's specific as opposed to general concepts, I think would make our discussion easier.
It would certainly make my, my life easier, Michael. So I.
Well, I guess I, I wrote the comment that it. Well, I guess I I wrote the comment and it emailed to you.
Oh, yeah, I totally have your comment. I I'm happy to go and look through the whole letter and see where it can be beefed up on those points. My general sense was that it was pretty well covered already in the letter, but. Obviously not as strong as you would like. So if you have specific wording changes, send them to me.
Okay. So let's go back. I'm sorry, Brian and Mary to interrupt you there.
That's okay. We on?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so number one, Marion, thank you very much. I know this is like hurting cats, so. As a cat owner and a pet owner, I am very appreciative of you pulling all this together into a single form. I think just I wanted to make sure that at this point. I didn't know if the select board was in a position to comment on what they heard back from. Council relative to the hiatus period. And. If they did hear back that such a period was likely. You know, a concern, I would really like to underline and emphasize that. Point in this letter because it's clear that the code states that an applicant's. An applicant cannot apply within that. Whatever we call it, the cooling off period. So that's my first statement. The second statement, I I don't think that we want to debate in this letter, whether or not there is or is not. A water course or hydrologic connection or whatever it might be. I think maybe just putting right in the letter that both Mass D E P and U S G S. Have mapped that front of that property as being. A potential resource area would be sufficient to. Table the the concept without necessarily adjudicating how important it is at this point in time. And aside from that, I we're obviously. Extremely concerned about our groundwater quality and the groundwater quality of our drinking water well and those of our neighbors. And. We just want to emphasize that the comments made by Board of Health. And Conservation Commission about. The flooding and the water quality are really our utmost concerns. Living right here immediately down gradient, we have already provided to Board of Health. An expert's opinion that says. One or two or three houses. Will pop the nitrates level at the property line and increase the bounding in the wetlands. And yet. That doesn't seem to. Really have much traction in this letter. I think that this would be the perfect place. To take that information added to our communications with mass housing. But those are the limits of our comments, and thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Brian. Arthur, are you next?
Thanks, Jeff. So I mean, I I unfortunately I haven't seen Marian's letter. I mean, I want to thank her for putting it all together. It's hard for me to to comment on it and to see if it reflects. To kind of my concerns, it's I think it certainly does. It touches on a lot of the things. But I just want to make sure, I mean, so I. My name is Arthur, and I live 58 Farm Road, which is basically directly across the street from part of the development and sort of. You know, diagonally across the street from the the main part of. Where this project is going to be. So. It it directly impacts me and my family, you know, amongst all the others sort of in the neighborhood, but but in a more, you know, direct measure than. Then perhaps some other people that have concerns. And so I I want to just. I want to really emphasize among. The point, the how out of character. And completely unlike the rest of the farm road, perhaps much of Sherburne this is. It's, it would be. As we all know, farm road is a is a legally scenic road. It's protected. It used to be, it has actual farms. There used to be a horse farm there. And the nature of where this. Our project is going to be, it would be completely disrupted and for forever. And I'm a hundred percent in favor of affordable housing. I don't think this project really gets us any closer to affordable housing. Or incrementally closer, but not significantly closer. I think there are other projects that the town is more supportive of, which would. Which would do that. But I think that the the harms. Greatly outweigh. The benefit. I think the. Putting something like this, thirty two odd houses plus a couple of other houses that what are formerly fifty five Farm Road. Putting thirty two new units. In a large development would would just fundamentally change Farm Road. It would be inappropriate. It would be dense in terms of the cluster. It would be dense in terms of the impact of the. Of the houses. The on the groundwater, on the well water, on the septic, which people have mentioned before, but I just, you know. I think I think it's just that the the disconnect between. Farm road and this project can't be over emphasized. The other thing is, I don't know if in the letter it talks about traffic. But you have to assume that thirty two units. There's going to be maybe sixty cars. Driving in and out every day. Basically, like right in the middle of. You know, right in the middle of Farm Road. That would obviously have a much greater impact for me if for the people at sixty. And fifty fifty six Farm Road and and sort of the other butters, but it would be a traffic nightmare. And it's going to be every morning. It'll be every evening or, you know, whenever people are commuting. And that's just, it's it's unavoidable, whether it be a public safety issue, I can't help but think that it would be. But there's no information that it won't be, and I think that's a concern. If you would imagine that each of these houses would have kids, which hope they do. The bus stop where the bus traffic would be ridiculous. I mean, it's it's already difficult enough to navigate up and down Farm Road on a regular basis. And then adding in. You know, another thirty, sixty, whatever children on the on the bus routes, I think would be. It would, it would. It would have a significantly deleterious impact on traffic, and I think it could present very well a public safety issue. I think there's. I think there's a need for affordable housing. I think this project doesn't really address that need. I think it's not the best. It's not the best and most appropriate way to to address that. I think it's not appropriate. I think it's too dense, and I think the number of houses will have a deleterious impact on the health and safety of the environment. Of my neighbors and of my own. There's no other way to get drinking water like this is it. And once this project's in, it's too late. And so the time to address these things is now. There's nothing from the developer saying this won't impact your drinking water and down the road, it's too late. So I, you know, I I can't, I can't emphasize that enough. And then the last thing, there were there were a couple of points, and I appreciate that Paul raised these. Both with the cooling off period, I think that squarely applies. It's hard to even imagine there's any question about that. And then also with the deed restriction issue. I mean, I recognize that reasonable people can disagree, but I think there's really no. There's really no meritorious argument that there that there is, there are deed restrictions in place on this property. Which prevent subdividing, and I'm happy to speak at length about that. I'm happy to talk to anybody about that and go over the in legal detail. But that's, you know. It it's hard to over emphasize how how clear cut that legal issue hits. So I know I've said a lot, this obviously has significant impact to me. We've lived in town for a long time. I appreciate welcoming new people to Sherburne. Hundred percent. But I think what the select board and all the committees have done and what they need to emphasize is there are already people who live here. Who are going to be negatively impacted, and there's no other way to 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 to. To talk about this, we negatively impacted. By this development. And I just, I hope that 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 tenor, that flavor doesn't get lost. In in the the letters in the submissions this is left for. Raises. I thank you for your time.
Thanks, Arthur. Marion, do you want to?
Well, I I didn't, I have a specific response to Arthur's specifically, but. I thought this might be a good time to call in Town Council Heather White.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest that she's here, I think. So there you are.
Hello.
To weigh in on the two legal issues that have been brought up here.
Well, first, the the one that I have looked at is the cooling off period, and I think there's no dispute that that is currently in effect, but that that will run. Based upon the date of a filing of an application for comprehensive permit. It's not currently determined. Since that that application isn't filed yet. So if the. Comprehensive permit application were to be filed tomorrow, it would be too early, but. That remains to be seen when that will be done. And then as far as the deed restriction, it's not something I've researched, but if the if the board so requests, we can look into it.
So could I suggest that this not? Be part of this meeting, the vice of council? Because as we go forward. We may be. Relying on councils. Advice on various things. And. To try and pin her down now on this issue. Maybe disadvantageous to the town. I'd rather. Leave those issues open.
Right. Thank you, Paul. I think that's a good comment. I probably shouldn't have called her in, but.
I did the first time we hear the vice should probably be an executive session.
Yeah, okay.
That's fine. I mean, I think it's at least because the subject came up and Heather got to introduce herself, so. I think that's a good suggestion, Paul. Is there, are there any other participants tonight that? Have anything they'd like to add? If not, Marion, do you want to do what you suggested and sort of recap as you were thinking, were you, what were you planning to do to share? Your draft again, or do you want to just get the input from? People emailing their comments to you?
You know, I could go scrolling through the draft, but people would get pretty dizzy. I'm not sure that. It's useful, but I'm happy to do it if you want.
I don't think it's necessary to how how's the rest of the select board feel? I I think we've gotten pretty good input from it, and and it is an early stage with. A lot of information not really, you know, being detailed yet, so it's sort of hard to make specific.
Cognizant of the fact that some of the people who've been commenting have not actually had a chance to see the letter.
Yeah.
In including Mr. Murchison, and that was. Blame it on Microsoft.
Yeah. Well, he has it now.
I think we could iterate kind of like summarize the public's comments between the the density.
Yeah.
Or character of it and maybe somewhere might what else they think was the intent? And, you know, does the board more or less?
The character of the neighborhood, the the. The scenic road. And. Character issue, the traffic, the traffic wasn't. Addressed here mainly because that's a traffic study, I believe, is required for the. For the comprehensive permit application or someplace before that.
Is it required? Is it not exempt from a traffic study?
I don't know.
I think I think of things like, you know, Dover Amendment projects I run into, they're actually exempt from traffic studies, so I don't know forty B same way, to be honest with you as well.
It might be, I I think the attitude of. Mass housing in the state is, you know, just basically suck it up town. I mean, you know, if if you're going to build it, you have to create the roadways for it.
And and of course, the density of them, and Michael's hand raised as well, but I think the density is one that.
Right. But safety is important. And other than that. Yeah, Michael's comments, I have read your email, Michael. It came very late and, you know, I had already sent out. But. Your comments are well taken, but I it would be good to have some suggested language. And I I can't promise everyone that the exact language you send me is going to be the language in the letter. But I'll I'll put in. Changes that the select board can then review.
Does if I may add through you, Jeff, does this board want to look at it publicly one more time? I I can't meet Monday or Tuesday, just so you know.
But we can't meet Monday because you have to have forty eight hours of. Notice for post of leaving. So. I I think we can probably do it via email. What's your suggestion on that, Paul?
We can't, we can't do email with all of us, you know what I mean? Like, actually.
You can provide individual comments to Marion without any deliberation, I think.
Yes, again, sorry.
Yeah, I think that's.
Right, so you would have to, I mean, you would have to trust me with making a final version and sending it off because.
I definitely trust you more than myself, so if that helps you.
Well, there were some very good suggestions tonight.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm. I'm grateful to everybody who spoke up.
Okay, Michael, do you want to add a quick comment here?
I'll do it. I will. Okay, I will send you some suggested language in the letter. But I mainly. Wanted to say that I think on the traffic issue. I thought I recall that there are traffic studies done as part of the forty B when we did some last ones. And so therefore. If it's a concern that. That if you want to. A concern that the public has made that you got that rises to your. To your concern. That you should include something like that. In this letter.
I thought I saw something in there, but I couldn't find it when I was looking just now, but anyway.
As long as you've basically given Marion leeway to add things about density and maybe some other energy and water fish, those kind of general things. Then I'll just send comments. To her.
Okay.
There there. There are several places where density is brought up in the letter already, so.
Right, I I drafted something here. I will just send it to you and you can. See how it works for you.
I'd rather that you take my draft.
I know, I'm putting it in your draft. Yes, I put it in your draft.
Oh, okay.
So I have just a few little quick inserts in your draft, and you can decide what you think. Okay, thank you, everybody, for your time.
All right, thanks. I don't see any other hands raised. Do we have any more select board comments?
So general comment is, I think the letter is. Pretty close to being. Issueable, so on the issue of. How do we finalize it? As you know, the. Ability to do a Zoom meeting. I've been assured it's going to be made retroactive. When the legislation finally gets signed by the governor, which would be ten days after enactment, and we haven't got. Enacted yet. But rather than take a risk on that, you probably can't do. The the most conservative position would be you can't do a Zoom meeting. After tomorrow. And you can't do. A meeting tomorrow for the reasons Jeff has stated, you can't, there's just no notice. That you can give, it's not an emergency. So I don't see us doing a meeting in the. Early part of the week. We would have to do it in person. Again, I've been assured by both on the Senate side and on the House side, they're going to make any legislation retroactive. To the fifteenth. So that all meetings held will be validated. But I'm not sure we want to be in that position, and we have to have meetings validated either.
Not just to check a letter, I I can understand that. If you think if if the board thinks it's close, I would encourage maybe. Trust Mary Ann, who wrote such a great first letter to absorb these, to take these comments and incorporate them as appropriate.
I will, but I would like a commitment from one other select board member to work with me on it. So that I have some feedback and a second pair of eyes.
I nominate George.
Either that or 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 I'll do it, Marion, because George is at a wedding all weekend. So my concern is he probably won't be timely.
Yeah, so I'm I have some time tomorrow. I have some time on Saturday. But after that, I have no time.
Okay, well, just just let me know if you need a hand, and I I'm tied up tomorrow morning, but I'm okay in the afternoon.
Okay, great.
I'm fine with both of you. You're. Both excellent.
Thank you, Paul. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for. Listening in and providing your feedback. We really appreciate it. So that concludes the article number five or item number five. So the only item left is consideration of routine business. And. Are there any, does anyone have select for reports? I actually have five, I think, but. Does anyone else have select for reports that wants to go first?
Well, I'll I'll go. I have a short one. You'll recall, I was kind of organizing short updates from various boards and committees and groups to the select board. To inform you on what's going on under the radar in town. And to inform the public. The next one that's lined up is. Sherburne Forest and Trail Association. Not a board or committee, but they do a lot of work in town, so that's for August eleventh.
Okay. You know, one suggestion on that, I just thought of it. We already have it on Zoom, but in some ways it might be nice, you know, we would record the whole August eleventh meeting on Zoom, but I mean on. On YouTube, but it'd be nice to maybe have it be a standalone section, that briefing on YouTube, so that someone just want to know about. Forest and Trails or Advisory, whatever it is. We could have every department, we already have the departments on the website, we can have that. Clip. Be there somehow, maybe Dover Sher, my client at Dover Sherwood Cable TV. be there somehow. Maybe Dover Sherburne, my client at Dover Sherburne Cable TV could cause it to be there. So someone that came, moved to town six months from now could see it. If it's a good overview.
Good suggestion. I have a, a kind of a corollary suggestion. Uh, since the master plan was completed and we distributed it to all the board and committee members that were then in place in town. Of course, time has passed and we have quite a few new members on boards and committees. And since meetings are in Zoom, it hasn't been easy to distribute the master plan to new members. So um, I'm, I'm looking for a convenient way to uh, get master plan copies to people who have joined uh, boards and committees in the last three years.
I actually don't think I ever got a copy myself. Actually, I got the open space and recreation. I was on advisory at the time.
Oh dear, you should have.
So I've got good news. Earlier this evening at the urging of various groups, the House and Senate agreed to simply extend remote meeting participation options under COVID related relief measures until March thirty-one twenty twenty-three, which is set to expire tomorrow. I'm pleased to report that the extension bill was enacted by both branches a short time ago and emergency preambles were added thereby immediate effect upon the governor's signature, which is expected tomorrow.
Yay.
So we should be all right for a Zoom meeting.
Terrific. Thank you, Paul. I knew they would do it, but whether they do it in time was not clear.
Yeah, they went with the uh, the House, but I think the Senate was actually December of twenty twenty-three.
Yeah.
All right. So uh, does anyone else have? Any select board reports? I'll give you the ones I have. I think you probably know most or all of them. The, our housing production plan was approved. We got the approval letter from the state. Did you, people see that already? So that was good news. So we're good for another five years. And I think you all heard that we, the, they confirmed this week, the bond rating, the triple A bond rating, and they upgraded us to um, from sort of solid management to strong management. I think Dan Sickel can give you the words better than I can say it, but um, that was successful. I'm not sure if Michael's still here. We, um, we're going to participate in a letter on the community choice aggr- aggregation plan because apparently there's some sort of uh, new policies being considered in implementation in Pittsburgh. And so um, uh, Michael is um, providing input from the Energy Committee in conjunction with Weston and Beverly and one other town that I can't recall to see that we can have the same uh, plan design that was in place when we applied a year ago. Do, so you want to add anything to that, Michael, that I screwed up or?
No, that's good.
It's good. I just want to let people know that we're, we're uh, joining with several towns who are um, requesting that the terms and conditions of community choice aggregation plans be as they were when we applied.
Yes, that's good. Yes. At least it shows we're making some progress there.
Yeah, I just wanted.
Hear from them soon.
To make people out there. And the last thing is our very last contract for the library hopefully is the library flooring, which we just got two bids in today. And so we'll be, um, CHA has already summarized the bids and we'll be um, picking a vendor for that fairly shortly. So that's good news on that front also. Anybody have anything else they want to add? All right. If not, um, do I have a motion to uh, close the meeting?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Marion.
Aye.
Eric.
Aye.
Paul.
Aye.
And I am I as well. And thank you Diane for all your hard work setting this up.
Welcome.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
I recorded today's stage of the tour and I got to catch it.
All right. Ciao.